Pretty good, thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Planning and zoning commission meeting for June 14th, 2023. If you could all rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Noreen, if you're on, if you could do the roll call, please.
Noreen, you're still muted.
Chairman Payne?
Here.
Commissioner Claffey?
Here.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Here.
Commissioner Havens?
Here.
Commissioner Lenaris?
Here.
Commissioner Trister?
Here.
Commissioner Woods?
Here.
Commissioner Pescarelli?
Here.
Commissioner Fox?
Here.
You're all set.
Very good, thank you, Noreen.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Throes is present. I lost my chair in my spot in the attendance.
Is here also, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, the next thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I think everything's all set the way it is, we don't have any changes. The next thing is public participation. Right of not listed on the agenda, speakers are limited to two minutes, if there's anybody wishing to speak, please come forward. Anybody online, if you're within the Zoom application, please raise your hand if you'd like to participate during public participation. If calling into Zoom meeting by telephone dial star nine to raise your hand to be recognized, or you star six when recognized to speak by telephone, and if you would like, you could state your name and address for the record. Anybody online?
No one has their hand raised.
Anybody here who'd like to speak? All set, very good. We're going to move on from public participation, the zoning enforcement officers' report. Everybody received that? Is there any questions for the planner to relate over to the zoning enforcement officer concerning the zoning officers' report? Have anything for us, Paul?
Nothing to add.
Hearing nothing, if there's no objection, we'll remove, we'll move on to remarks by commissioners. If there's any remarks by commissioners. Hearing none, we're going to go to the first public hearing, and I would ask the secretary if you can read the procedures for our public hearing, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Procedures for public hearings. The order of proceedings of public hearings shall be as follows. A. Convening by the chairperson. B. Reading of the notice by the chair, by the commission secretary or commissioner designated by the chairperson to act in their stead. C. Presentation by applicant. D. Town planner report on the application. E. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the application, limited to three minutes per person. F. Persons wishing to speak in opposition to the application, limited to three minutes per person. G. Rebuttal by the applicant, limited to five minutes total. During a public hearing, it shall be within the discretion of the chairperson, whether the time limitations should be varied slightly, provided the commission consents to any such variance by a majority vote.
Okay, very good, those are procedures for the public hearing. I'll ask if Commissioner Woods, if you wouldn't mind reading the first petition, petition oh eight two three, please, for the record.
Yep. Petition oh eight two three, zoning regulation text amendment pertaining to section six point sixteen, adult use cannabis cultivation and sale and medical marijuana dispensary and production. Section six point sixteen point six, sign and exterior display requirements, applicant Newington TPZ, contact Paul Dixon.
Very good, Paul?
Since I am the applicant and the town planner, I'll give you one report on this. As noted in the memorandum, so the zoning regulations were amended in 2014 with medical marijuana use. Subsequently, they were, in 2021 and 2022, they were amended to allow the adult use cannabis. Kind of a leftover from the medical marijuana regulations from the state of Connecticut was the signage requirement. So this was a signage requirement that limited them to 16 inches by 18 inch sign for, again, for just the, any retail use of it, and that was under medical marijuana. Now, the Newington zoning regulations, when updated, this was in place, it applies to everything in the section, and staff's recommendation and kind of as put forward in this amendment is again to keep, again, there is no existing medical marijuana dispensary, we don't anticipate there will be one, but the law still exists out there, so we keep item A that talks about if it is a medical marijuana dispensary in compliance with that Connecticut State Agency's regulations, and the section is in there, and then to allow exterior signage, again, for the adult use cannabis retailer, hybrid retailer, cultivator, microcultivator, just in compliance with section six point two of our regulations, and again, that is just the general signage, they will be regulated just like any other use in that underlying zone, per that zone's regulation, and again, added Connecticut general statutes, twenty-one A, four point H, that is the state of Connecticut's general statutes for, again, adult use cannabis, and as the state kind of changes theirs, if they do add a sign requirement or any other restrictions, then that would be able to be cited in any approvals that come before this commission.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
Just one question, so we're striking the six, the six point one, six point six size, or are we at, like, I'm trying, well, it says current, and then proposed, but in proposed, I don't see any, refers it back to any size requirement.
Correct. The way that it's kind of structured is, so the medical marijuana, again, that's Connecticut State Agency's twenty-one A, four oh eight seventy, so that cites to that, again, we don't anticipate someone opening a medical marijuana dispensary right now when a hybrid is an available use, you know, that's kind of the way going forward, our current medical one did, as we know, transfer over to a hybrid use, but that's in there, again, it is something that is in the state statutes, and it's in our regulation, we haven't struck medical marijuana out of it. Now, for the other one, it just cites section six point two, so instead of within the cannabis section of saying this sign has to be exactly this size, exactly that size, it just refers to the underlying zone. So it'll be, you know, if it's Berlin Turnpike, it'll be subject to that zone, or any other one.
Okay. Gotcha.
Any other commissioners, Commissioner Throes?
Just a quick question, based upon the fact that this is just coming to us now, has the town kind of given a bit of a free pass to the couple that are establishing themselves on the Pike or Eddie? Because right now, Fine Federal sign is pretty big, and Zen Leaf has one that's the size of like a full-size bag, saying coming soon.
Yeah, so Zen Leaf's one, that's a temporary sign that was signed off on the zoning enforcement officer. On Fine Federal, I haven't looked at their exact size, I know that they had, again, the freestanding sign that they put it on it, but I have not actually been around the back and looked at the exact one that they have right above the building. I believe they did start off with a sixteen by eighteen, unless they did change that.
On the street.
Gotcha.
I literally drove, I came early to drive past it to come here, and obviously, depending on the vote and what happens tonight, it's a different story, the question was really like going backwards a little bit, it's already there and mounted, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and it would be the sign that's, you know, this is typically the sign is that's in front of the building, again, that was the regulation, however, anything has been approved in the past, I can't easily.
Yeah, one on the streets, probably about five feet long, maybe a foot and a half, two feet tall, right with the rest of the, I don't know.
Oh yeah, with, that has a freestanding sign, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this, this is, well, again, it does potentially correct that, that was allowed, you know, when they came in for their sign package, I believe that was signed off by the town, that they replaced kind of that blade within the freestanding sign, but I believe they may have a smaller one that's right above the actual unit themselves, the retail.
Gotcha, so what we're talking about here is independent from what would be on the building, so in other words, freestanding, it could be as big as it wants?
So this, though, it would be regulated by the signage in the underlying zone.
Right. But being that it's a dispensary, it was, it, so like as we speak right now, that wouldn't be allowed, but based on tonight, it could be?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay. All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Okay, since this is a public hearing, we'll go to the public. Is there anybody online that would like to speak either in favor of this?
There are no hands raised.
Anybody wishing to speak in opposition?
No hands raised.
If there's no objection, I suggest that we have a motion to move this to old business for action.
Make a motion, we move this to old business for action later this evening?
Motion made. Do I have a second? Second. Second it. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, our next petition, public hearing, is petition ten twenty-three, if Commissioner Lenaris, if he could read that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Petition ten dash twenty-three, special permit, section six point two point five for double-sided halo-lit freestanding sign at two seven five Richard Street, applicant contact Christine Bratch DeFaro, owner, EDAC Technologies LLC.
Okay. The applicant is online, I'm gonna... There, Christine?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I set to present, I'm sorry?
Yes, yes, you are all set to present your application.
Okay, apologies, my name is Christine Bratch DeFaro, applying for a special permit at two seven five Richard Street in the PD zone for a double-sided halo-lit freestanding sign. The sign will be replacing the existing freestanding sign in the same location, it will be fifty-two inches high, one hundred and fourteen inches wide, will have a stone base, it contains the business name Hanwha Aerospace, as well as the address number two seven five. The total square footage is one hundred and fifteen square feet, counting both faces, and the halo-lit illumination means that only the logo and business name will illuminate at night. The sign is made of aluminum and acrylic, and I believe that is all of the pertinent information, I do believe they plan on having that deepening around the base as well. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to come to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the staff?
Uh, no. So, just to add in for staff, as noted in the memo, that existing sign does, it is on the site, there was no record of a special permit for that, so this, again, codifies that, puts it in place, so they do have all the approvals, and as noted, the sign is up on the screen, and it is an improvement over the existing sign, and the zoning officer has reviewed it and found it compliant with the regulations.
Any questions from the commissioners? All right, public hearing, we're going to go to the public, is there anybody online or in the room that would like to speak in favor of this application? You're limited to three minutes, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor?
No hands raised.
Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none? If there's no objection, and I would ask for a motion to move petition ten twenty-three to old business. So move, Mr. Chairman? Motion made, do I have a second? Second it by Commissioner Claffey. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At approval of minutes, we have approval of minutes of May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, entertain a motion for that. So move, Mr. Chairman? Motion made, and a second?
Second it.
Second it. Any questions or comments, any corrections for the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously to approve the minutes of May twenty-fourth. Okay, we're at some old business, do we have motions? Thank you. Keep one of them. Okay, the petition oh eight twenty-three, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve zoning regulation, petition zero eight dash twenty-three, zoning regulation text amendment pertaining to section six point sixteen, adult use cannabis cultivation and sale in medical dispensary and production, section six point sixteen point six, sign and exterior display requirements, applicant Newington TPZ, contact Paul Dixon. Motion to approve. Move to approve the text amendment to section six point sixteen point six for signage requirements for adult use cannabis businesses, with the effect with an effective date of six twenty-eight twenty twenty-three. Reasons for the approval, this amendment will provide for the same amount of signage as allowed by other businesses within the same zones. Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Trista. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The, and the next petition is petition ten twenty-seven, ten twenty-three, if I could entertain a motion for that.
Petition ten dash twenty-three, special permit, section six point two point five for a double-sided halo-lit freestanding sign at two seven five Richard Street, applicant contact Christine Brack DeFaro, owner, EDAC Technologies LLC, make a motion to approve, move to approve the special permit for a freestanding sign at two seven five Richard Street. Reasons for the approval, the site currently has an existing freestanding sign, and this permit will formalize the sign, the proposed sign is compliant with the Town of Newington zoning regulations.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second it, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, the next thing on the agenda is petitions for public hearing scheduling, I'm not sure if you have to go over anything with us.
Yep, there are none right now, there will be some things on the next agenda, eight twenty-four referrals, but those are working their way from council.
Okay, very good, next thing on the agenda is the town planner's report.
Okay, so there, the current land use application, which is always on there and posted, some items for the commission's attention, just to note that, so there was a Senate bill that passed, nine nine four, this is that motor vehicle repairer certificate of location approval, TPZ just did a recent one for gasoline, as far as I can tell, again, it goes for signature, but now it's actually going to change from being the ZBA to actually the zoning enforcement officer. Again, with the principle, this was supported by the planning associations and the zoning Uncasio, where, you know, for the certificate of location approval, it has already gone through TPZ, it has gone through commissions as far as its approval, and it will be the ZEO who, again, signs it along with the building official and the fire marshal, again, saying it's compliant with the zoning regulations. And again, this is a bill that just passed through, so it'll be signed and go through, so we'll probably need to just update that one section of the zoning regulations, which says actually that the TPZ is the responsible party. So the next legislative update is, there we go, a Senate bill, nine nine eight, so this is the, what the legislature did is, there was one bill that talked about open space, and it was talking about basically taxes, and what could be done as far as that with, sorry, I kind of lost the train of thought, so for, just, you know, tax exemptions for open space, what they did is they tacked on sections of House Bill six seven eight one and six six three three, these were both kind of to deal with housing, to deal with renters, and there's a lot of aspects of it, again, that are for renters, that are, you know, that the state's going to have a good amount of work, working on registries and rental assistance, but what's pertinent to this commission is, instead of the other bills, which actually had the fair share housing allocation, they actually had the methodology in there, those bills did not advance, what they did as part of this bill as an amendment, they added that that OPM by twenty twenty-four needs to establish a methodology for meeting the requirements, so instead of passing the fair share requirements, what they've done is commissioned a study. So after that, twenty twenty-four, we should see more, again, in talking with the legislature and the planning units and what they're looking at, again, hopefully this process is iterative, it works with the towns, we'll be able to see what they're coming out with the methodology and the numbers for each town, and then be able to comment on it and work with them rather than it just being pushed out, but this is going to be a wait and see. That dovetails into the next section, where at the last meeting, I was asked to kind of look at the affordable appeals list with the numbers that we had, and where we're at with what's been approved, so some kind of important figures is the twenty-ten census numbers, which are currently being used by the affordable appeals list right now, are thirteen thousand and eleven housing units, the twenty-twenty census numbers are thirteen thousand two hundred and nineteen units, so there wasn't an exceptionally large jump within those ten years. Historically, the jump has actually been higher, with, I can say, between two thousand and two thousand and ten, the jump was seven hundred and forty-seven units, with this last census, the jump was two hundred and nine units. Again, we'll get into what was approved this, again, right now, eight point five percent affordable, and we have one thousand one hundred and seven units, again, projected new housing units, so what I did is I went through and looked at the apartments, single family, what's been approved since the twenty twenty and not, or has not been built out and wouldn't have been counted in the twenty twenty census, and it looks to be roughly a thousand units, that's the number that's kind of been out there, but again, this is apartments and the single-family homes, so it includes the subdivisions that have recently gone through, the projected new affordable units for the thousand is one hundred and twenty-five, so what does that do? What you can see is, as far as the current appeals list is at the top, again, with eight point one, eight point five one percent, now, inserting the twenty-twenty census numbers, which they have not said when they're going to start using that for the affordable housing appeals list, but putting that number in for our housing units, and then adding in the deed restricted units, it would put us at nine point three two percent. One of the biggest variable numbers that I've seen in looking past, in the past in Newington, is actually our CHFA and USDA mortgages, those have gone up from the higher five hundreds down to four hundreds, and, you know, when you have one thousand, one hundred units, a hundred units is a big swing across what's affordable and what we have for units, again, this is a projection, we don't know how the tenant rental assistance and the single-family mortgages are going to come out and the numbers. So looking forward, this would actually be the incorporation of those thousand units that we talked about, and the deed restricted puts us around eight point six six. Again, this is just a projection for discussion, the actual numbers will vary on this as they come in, because it depends, again, highly on rental assistance and CHAFA mortgages, which we as a town, you do not have control over, that's, you know, private party, that's person buying a house, I think there is opportunities for the town to encourage CHAFA mortgages, and that's something that could be discussed going forward, but again, that's not necessarily a TPZ issue, it's a town issue, kind of going forward and saying, what do we do as far as the council and that, and what could be done, so that's us looking at our affordable housing plan, encouraging all the different housing types, and going from there, so, and this is just kind of a idea of where we're at, again, it's kind of going to jump up, we don't know when the twenty thirty census, you know, the numbers would be incorporated in, because there's a lag, and when they incorporate them into the appeals list, but again, the, kind of the numbers are, if they incorporate the twenty twenty census numbers going forward, it looks like we'll be a little bit above nine percent, you know, nine point two percent, and then we'll see how all the numbers come in as rental assistance.
Very good, any questions for the town planner? Thank you very much, Paul.
I know one other item that I did include in the packet, just for your reference, it was discussed at the last meeting, was the charging stations, and the potential for just the infrastructure, again, that is a statute that's out there, just to discuss with the commission, whether there's been any more thought since the last meeting, or whether the commission would like me to kind of put forward an amendment.
I had a question, what you're proposing there, the ten percent of the parking spaces, is, are they saying that you have to do ten percent or not, and then also, with some of the development that we have in now, people are, they're putting in charging stations, maybe not as many, but they're putting in not just the infrastructure, they're putting in the whole system, whether it's three, four, or five, how does that relate to what they're doing now?
Yep, so now, of course, it's voluntary, and it's great, there are people who are putting them forward, you know, whether it's five heads here or there as an option for their tenants, what it does relate to is, the infrastructure that I was kind of talking about, it's kind of the lower hanging fruit of, again, this is new construction, so this is when, again, we're not talking about making existing, you know, apartments or existing commercial entities rip up their parking lots and put in the infrastructure for it, it's only when it's new, and again, the ten percent is only for infrastructure, it's for the conduit, and kind of discuss the most, I think, costly part of it would be just making sure that the electrical infrastructure could support it in the future for level two charging.
I mean, some, some areas, the power companies are having a hard time supplying all that, it just seems awful high, it seems like it's going to affect the developers a lot compared to that LIV drainage that we went through for a while here in Newington, so I don't know whether or not ten percent is something that the whole commission was interested in or not.
So the, the issue on this one is statute, so most, so it is basically state law now to have the ten percent, to codify it in the zoning regulations, if a developer came in and asked me or announced that here, here's the development, I would be putting a note on the staff report, you know, please put in infrastructure for it, that this kind of codifies it in our zoning regulations, so it is something kind of going forward that the state said shall do, again, if we, the, kind of what I put in the packet is what would make us compliant with it, nothing saying people can't put in more of them, some might want to, some might have the desire to, but again, this just kind of puts that bar at, at least it's ready for it in the future, the conduit's in place, again, this isn't the heads, this isn't the costly part of the infrastructure, but at least the conduit and everything is in place, ready for it.
Very good, any questions?
So this is basically saying that you'd have to put in the, you pretty much have to put the heads in, you can't leave it just a cap box.
It's actually, the way I read it is that you need to give me fifteen and twenty-eight
breaker, I want twenty volt AC, you know, let's just say for a level one, means it has to be there on a pole, ready to be converted, so someone just goes and pops a breaker in, so that's a little more than just the, I mean, the infrastructure in some terms is literally a conduit with no wires in it, and they pull the wire when they want to put that in, so there's two different, if you're talking just the infrastructure, I don't know if this reads infrastructure, this to me reads that you have to put, ready so I can charge that car in when I move in.
Yeah, it would be, so it's kind of considering the two ends of the system, when you have the electrical infrastructure inside the When you have the electrical infrastructure inside the building, as you said, pop in a breaker versus the actual charging head. This does not require you to install the charging head. It requires you basically to dead end the conduit in a box in an area that you would put the charging heads. And I wouldn't even go as far as making them, you know, do bolt patterns, you know, because who knows what is actually going to be the technology that comes out? Everything's changing every couple of years, there's new suppliers out there.
Yeah, but you're using terminology that says charging stations and charging equipment with the purpose of charging electric or whatever. That means everything has to be installed, ready to go.
That is capable of supporting level two charging stations. So I think the key word there is capable of supporting. Again, that's why when it says such infrastructure includes, it is not limited, we can knock the but is not limited when we work on the wording for this regulation. But again, underground conduit junction box is an adequate electrical supply. The adequate electrical supply is the biggest part of this equation.
What happens if the power, if it's not adequate supply?
Well, they, so the way I would approach this too is if they were coming in, at, at the planning stage, they don't have their MEPs done. So it would basically be on their site plan.
They do, and they talk to the power companies, and they, they check to see if they have power.
A lot of them, well, a lot of them I've dealt with.
It's like they have to talk to the NBC, make sure they have sewer and stuff like that and utilities before they come in. It just seems like an awful lot that the town, that the state is mandated.
Yeah, yeah, and the state has mandated, really, the discussion as far as my recommendations is, is if it's, if we want to follow what the state is saying, just the 10%, whether there's a desire to do more, which it doesn't appear to, you know, leave it to the developers themselves to determine their market and figure, okay, I have tenants here, this is, you know, because you're going to have different, different styles of development. You're going to have some that are lifestyles developments, there are some that are, you know, have more amenities, have less amenities, and their charges reflect it based upon their rents. So there may be people who put in a lot more, who are encouraging, you know, people to adopt and encouraging that type of green movement. And then you might have some who would say, yep, I'm good with the infrastructure as is, and then when the requests come in.
Any commissioners have any questions?
I agree with you, I think the 10% is a little bit high. But, I mean, like a grocery store, a grocery store could have as many as 200 parking spots. Plus, you know, 20 charging stations that they have to have provisions for, that's pretty substantial.
Yeah, and I think it would be kind of, this will be up to the commission when it comes to you for when they have their plans. And again, it will be staff review too of, okay, you have 20 stations, okay, you have the infrastructure. So maybe it's not, you know, 20 boxes of saying, okay, that, but it's the main line going out to that part of the infrastructure with the one box back to it, so the work could be done in a confined area. This could all be worked out when the site plans come in, you know. And I wouldn't necessarily encourage someone if they didn't know exactly what the layout was going to be, to lay it out for right now technology and say, I'm going to put it in five years, and they have to go and redo everything.
Yeah, so you could, so you've got primary in the building, then you take your secondary from the building to a sub panel, and that's it. But that could feed 10 or 15 or.
Yeah, and, and, and the thing is, and you have the conduit going out to the parking lot, whether it's a central location, that would be reviewed by the commission when it comes and say, okay, yep, it's compliant with our regulation. You have, again, the conduit going out there, you have the infrastructure, and it doesn't require you to pull the cable.
And there's no cable. And there's no charging station that has to be there. Just if somebody wanted to put it, everything needs to be in place so they can pull.
Wouldn't you rather have four or five new ones working?
Yeah, I, I would agree.
20 underground that aren't working?
Yeah, but this is, again, this is the legislature, this is what they've put out there shall do. There's other communities who do more. Again, it depends on where the community is looking to do. It depends that there's some who are very specific, only in little areas like downtown areas. There are some who are more specific in like rentals that have a lot of share type of that, where you have zip cars and things like that, and even have that in the regulations saying zip cars. There are some times where it can go a little further. Again, some of this stuff is best left for the developer to work out the plan for their tenants and what they're looking to do. But yeah, this is a requirement of the state, the 10%.
Well, and that goes back to my question of our proposed definition and that mandated regulation are, are saying different things. A public or private parking space that is served by battery charging equipment with the purpose of charging. That tells me I have to, it, but then in the regulations says charging infrastructure, which is no electricity, just the conduit. So why would we want a definition that doesn't coincide with the regulation?
So the way I would kind of look at, again, this could be changed. The way I look at it, kind of how it's been put for it, again, you define it to define what a level two is, it's kind of understood, but you define it to say what's out there. Then you have the electrical vehicle charging stations, number one, infrastructure. Current law says this is required. It's kind of built in, if any other state law comes out saying you have to require a certain amount of stations, that just get inserted as number two. So it's there to kind of future proof the regulation itself, that's the way it's kind of set up. Again, it's just infrastructure now.
And it's also, you need to have 30 spaces or more.
Correct.
You go up 10, you're going, like you have 40, you need four, you have 50, you need... So in theory, like, nah, forget it. I'm trying to look at the current, some of these current multifamilies that are under construction, and we know more are coming. If you look at some of these buildings, you'd have 45 charging stations. You'd have probably the most I've seen in Connecticut, no offense, they don't even have that many on the, on the DOT. They only have, I think, 10, maybe 12, if they're double sided. Some are double sided, some are only single sided. But even out on the I-95, and they have maybe 10 or 12 at most. And those rest areas hold 400, 500 cars, maybe 300 cars? I had an idea, I just think it's a little extreme to put on the backs of a developer, not even the tenant or the renter or the, the, the community. I mean, look at Newington, where we have two in our whole town, right? That, that, it, it is pretty sad, but.
And, and, and that's why, you know, potentially I would recommend keeping it at what the state, you know, mandated, and that's kind of what I'm getting from the, you know, from the commission is, again, go with the state mandate and allow the developer to push further if they have the tenants who have those vehicles and the desire to. There's actually a lot in this law too that doesn't apply to the TPZ, but they went as far as having it, so if you're a renter, you have a right to tell your landlord, get a station. If you're a condo, you have a right to install one, the condo board cannot tell you not to. So this, this law actually does have a lot more to it, but this is the one section that applies to the TPZ.
Good, thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner Droz?
Just doing a quick search on my phone. In 2020, and obviously, there's different sources, different numbers, but in 2020, 4% of new cars were electric, in 2022, 14% of new cars were all electric. So it's common.
Yeah, and this is again, to future proof it, is what the Clean Air Act was trying to do, not making them install the stations with a, you know, if there wasn't demand with the price of the stations. But, you know, this may encourage people, if they have it for 10%, maybe they throw in a couple of the stations because they've already have the infrastructure, they have it ready, they have a couple cars, other people there, and they say, well, I need a station too. It makes it easier for them just to add more down the line when they get more of their tenants. I know, you know, recently at the place I live, had to add them and had to rip up the parking lot and go through it because people had asked for the stations there, so it was a larger, more expensive retrofit. And yeah, this only affects new, so it does not affect anything that has already been approved by the TPZ.
Now, let me ask you this, have we looked at when a developer comes in and wants to do a site plan and change a whole design of a parking lot? There's sometimes they come here and they're ripping out the whole parking lot, redesign it. Would that then constitute new? Is that, I mean, on like building, you have so many percentage, then it becomes, oh, it's complete gut rehab, brand new. Would, would this ever possibly affect someone who wants to, say, redesign the Fen Road Stop and Shop parking lot, just for whatever reason, they would, not that they would, but.
What I would recommend is that, you know, when we're talking about the regulation, we're talking about now, but especially if we're talking about, you know, through an adoption phase, that we clearly state what the intent is. Is it, when you rip up a parking lot, is it considered new or not? Now, they would come in for a site plan and say, if you're disturbing the entirety of the site, they would be coming before you for a site plan because they're modifying so much of it, changing access, adding parking, doing all that. But that's kind of, I think, at the commission's discretion because what the legislature's just said is new.
I understand. Yes, but that same example, right? I understand with the opportunity to put the conduit in, but the building might not be changed. So while they're maybe reconfiguring the parking lot, they might not be doing anything to upgrade the electrical service in the building. So it's, it's going to be interesting how we look at this. I mean, in a lot of businesses, they're doing it anyways because it's a draw, you know, it is, it's common.
I can say from staff level too, typically, one of our comments is consider this. You know, without a regulation says you're required to do it, but some consider it, some do not.
It's been encouraged for quite a few years.
Yes.
So, well, it wasn't mandatory, it was definitely looked at, at least get the conduit in.
Yeah, and, and, you know, in the case where if they were completely retrofitting a building and redoing the electrical and gunning it, that would be an opportune time. And that might be, you know, that's something that, again, for the, for the TPZ to discuss of how, you know, how you want this to apply, because the state's given the language of new. So I think it's up to the TPZ to really define in this case.
Local market moved into the Food Mart Plaza, they added two or three stations. So, you know, and again, it was an existing building, but state was paying for it.
Yeah, yeah, especially if there, if there are programs out there, what you might find is since the infrastructure is being put in, they might want to take advantage of one of those programs while they're out there.
Very good. If there's no other questions, we're all set.
Okay, so. It has kind of put together something, and then I'll have it for discussion, and we'll move forward.
All right. If you're all set, the next thing on the agenda is communications. We all received the CROG letters. Does anybody have any questions concerning the CROG letters? Hearing none, we'll move to the next thing on the agenda is public participation. Right, it was not listed on the agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. If you're within the Zoom application, raise your hand. If you'd like to participate during public participation and calling into Zoom meeting by telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand to be recognized. You start sticks six, when recognized to speak by telephone. And you may state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody online?
Yes, there is. So I will click allow to talk. You are all set to talk.
Hi, Rose Lyons, 46 Alton Drive. I just wanted to thank the town planner for the update on the affordable housing. I think I understand most of it except for the deed restricted. And I think probably what we have right now, from my understanding, is Hopkins Drive. And then if it's Dakota, I believe, is the other one that's deed restricted, then I think I'm on track and to understanding what's going on. I'm just wondering, and this is something, this, I know there's no back and forth. One of the top things that the town residents in the survey that they just recently did, where they were dissatisfied with was our town website. And I watched several meetings and to get a little bit of information on different things. Last night at the town council meeting, they were talking about Alumni Road, they were talking about Anthony Properties and that National Welding site that's still not been sold and so forth and so on. I honestly don't go on the website because it just gets me too confused. I'd rather just watch on television. But if anybody has any kind of influence, if they could please just talk to someone to see if there can be some kind of general information that's attainable by the general public on, off of our website, because so many things get put onto Facebook and so many answers are given that you really don't know what the truth is and what it isn't. I mean, I know, like, I've had questions about the Connecticut Avenue property over, that they were going to put five or six houses on, and I don't see any activity over there. So usually what I do is I will write to the town planner or the town engineer, now that we have one. But I, I thank you once again, Paul, for putting that information out there. I recorded it so I can look at it again. The other thing I was wondering, and I don't know how long, and I think that Eric may have told me before, how long is this hybrid meeting going to continue? Is there going to be some point in time when NCTV is going to be able to zoom in on you fellows and, and figure out who's talking? I can just about see, and I've got a pretty big TV, and you can just, I can see a rainbow of colors of shirts around the table, but I can just about tell who's talking sometimes if you don't, you know, state your names. I mean, I know you call on them and stuff like that, but I kind of would like to see it back to the way it used to be. That's my own personal opinion. In any case, once again, thank you so much, and I love these short meetings, they're wonderful. Have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online?
No one else.
Anybody here in person would like to speak?
Up talent.
I talked about cannabis a little bit. Is that all right? I know, because I heard of the discussion tonight, is it all right?
Go right ahead.
Yeah. I'm not really wild about it, for the record. In New Britain, at Webster Bank, I was following this story. Webster Bank in New Britain, the town, the citizens of the town were totally against a cannabis and a cultivation of whatever going on at the same time in the same building. I don't know if anybody's ever been to Corbin Avenue or old Webster Bank, because they got a massive parking lot, the building is massive. I think it used to be one of their main headquarters, Webster Bank. But the entire, well, I can't, but many of the citizens were against it. And, but the town council and the TPZ went ahead with it. I'm just not wild about bringing cannabis into the town of Newington. Has anybody looked at, I mean, you have to look, comment afterwards, if somebody or anybody here, or you guys, as a, or ladies, sorry, as a unit, looked into other towns to see what has happened after a period of time when cannabis has been instituted and just to see what happened to the town? I'm not saying bad things are going to happen, I'm just, I'm just not wild about it. I, I just think, I understand times are changing, I just think we should proceed with caution. But if somebody could let me know, if anybody's looked around at other towns, that maybe it's been going on cultivation and, and selling of cannabis for a period of time to see if, oh, let's say crime, traffic accidents, things like that going on that may have increased, or, I don't know, possibility decreasing, but I, I think more increase than decrease, but I could be wrong. But that's about it. I just wanted to, I'm not really wild about cannabis, but I, I know times are changing, I get it.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak during public participation? Hearing none, we're going to move to remarks by commissioners, if any commissioners have any remarks. Mr. Fox, Commissioner Fox, go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just in response to Mr. Talat's question about the research into other towns, I know I've, I've been watching it, I was on the commission when we approved, we approved that and did a lot of questioning of our residents, but I really don't think there's been enough time to, to, to assess the, you know, to find, to see what's happening to, to traffic, to accidents, ODs, and things like that. So I'm sure that's, that's planned for the future. Thank you for your question.
Any other commissioners have any remarks? Okay, hearing none, I want to thank everybody. Thank you, Paul, and thank you, NCTV, and motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody, and good night.